We're. Good to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have people coming in. Rock and Community Access promoting the panelists. Evan, I'm going to promote to panelists. Okay, board members and members of the public, I would like to introduce you to Evan Sears. Wave, Evan.
Hello.
Hello, Evan.
He is a new planner in our office. And just taking over duties that Raisa and Shane have done, so you'll be interacting with him quite a bit.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Madam Chair.
Chief Williams not coming?
Um, I believe he is. Yes, he did tell me that he would, um.
But we can start.
I'll start with the opening.
Thank you much.
Okay, calling together the board meeting for March 1st, actually, 2022. First, I have to read a an opening statement. This meeting is being recorded in accordance with the government ordering suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general chapter 38, section 20. Real-time public participation and comment can be addressed to the planning board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send comment or question to the chair via the question and answer function. Submitted text for comments will be read into the record. For those of you joining by phone, press star nine. If you want to ask questions, please raise your hand. A copy of this recording will be on the city's webpages. All votes will be done via roll call to ensure account accuracy, as your name is called, please indicate that you are present. All members are present. Oh, that's it. Okay, that ends that opening statement. Get back to our agenda for March 1st. First, we'll do a roll call of the board members. Larry Hassan.
Here.
Rita Das.
Present.
James Sweeney.
Here.
Samantha Boyce.
Present.
Tony Gonzalez is here. Everyone knows Pamela Gurry, Mr. May, and you introduced Evan. And we're ready. Okay.
Rob, did you not make me panelists?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Because I can't move anybody.
Yeah, well, that's tough. So let me move to make him co-host. Sorry about that. I do have an attendee with their hand up, and that is Scott Faria.
It's actually Jake Creeden.
Oh, really?
Yeah. He's at Scott's office, so he's, but I think you have the minutes before.
Yes, we have some things to go over before we open to the public, Jake.
And should I just first mention that we have a couple continuances? So if folks are here for Elliott Street, that's been continued. Is there a date, Pam?
Um, I believe the April, wait a minute, let me just grab the calendar, April.
April 5th.
April 5th.
Okay, also 432 Crescent Street has been continued. And did I miss any other Pam that are being continued?
No.
Okay, all right. So first, did the board members have a chance to review the minutes from the February 1st meeting? And is there a motion to accept these minutes?
Motion to accept minutes.
Can I get a second? All right. Roll call, Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Rita Das.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Samantha Boyce.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Okay, thank you. Um, A and Rs.
We have no A and Rs. We have nothing that needs your signature or actions or anything.
And no street acceptances. Okay, so the first one up is 6870 Field Strip, Field Street, sorry, Return to ZBA.
Good evening, Madam Chairlady, and through you to the members of the board, and good evening, Mr. May, City Planner, and I did meet Mr. Sears today, Evan. And I asked to be on, obviously, no real action other than to, I guess, postpone to your next meeting, the request by us to return to the zoning board. Because almost everyone, I think, other than Mr. Hassan, is the only ones that, when I started this project about two years ago, it is the old Max's Den on Field Street. And at the time, we proposed to put in a big expansion, seat-wise and otherwise. As it turns out, I went to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Zoning Board of Appeals voted unanimously 0-5 that if I went to the planning board and had a lease or something for those extra eight spaces that we needed because of the new seating, that they wouldn't, we wouldn't have to come back to the zoning board. All that being said, in the interim, so that you weren't thinking that I was just kicking the can on behalf of my client down the road, so many things have happened. I get into two purchase of leases to get the additional parking. In both cases, it went under agreement over the last year and a half and fell apart at the end because both owners needed the space. In one case, they had trucks and they wanted to overlap with us. I said, we can't do that. So those both failed. In the interim, my client spent $150,000 with the city to expand the water and sewer on Field Street. That has been done at his expense, figuring we're going to expand the, the, the restaurant to a number over 100. In fact, after all of this, my client decided that he's going to just live with the original plan of the building other than doing some refurbishing. So I did drop off today for your general review, should it come back to you people. In case, we're going to file a building permit with the city plant, the city building department with the plans that we feel will allow us to get a building permit. If for some reason Mr. Pluff or his staff feel that we have to go to zoning because of something, then your request will, my request with you is still open. I suspect that we are way under the parking regulation now, going back to only a 58-seat restaurant, and it's more compatible with the neighborhood anyway. We don't need the additional leases. So that's the reason. I just want, because it's a new board, we have, we've had all kinds of engineering, parking plans, drainage plans, all at my client's expense, and now we don't need any of them. But here we are, like, two years later, and I just want that continuance, so you don't think I'm just kidding, to just keep it on the agenda pending the building department reviewing the plans that I gave to Pam today. And I just want to inform that, so, you know, the credibility of the whole project is not jeopardized.
Okay.
That's my point.
All right, thank you. Questions from the board?
Sir, how many times have you been before this board, if you don't mind my asking? I am relatively new.
For this project, you mean, Sam?
Yes, please.
Well, most of the time, it's got continued, but I've been before the board for, on this project, maybe three times. It was because we had to show a lease that was recordable, and for your edification, leases with, that require situations with the city, usually pending approval, have to be approved by the city solicitor's office to make sure they're legal documents that can be recorded in the registry of deeds that tie the parking or whatever it is to the land, as long as that quote "use" is still in existence. And in this case, of course, if the restaurant use goes out of business, the, and we needed those other spaces, it would fail for that reason. Was I clear on that?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Is this open to the public, Pam? Rob?
Um, it is. I'm not sure that there's anybody from the public.
If anybody would like to comment, if you hover your cursor down at the bottom of your screen, you will see a raised hand icon, looks like this. If you're on phone, star nine will do the same thing. And Madam Chair, I do not see anyone raising their hand at this time.
Okay. So there's no other questions? Would someone like to make a motion for continuance with a condition?
Madam Chair, just a question. And I see that Chief Deputy Williams is on. I don't know if he has any questions on this one or not. I don't know if he does. I don't know if he can hear me. I think he can hear me. He's probably muted. Just wondering, before we move.
Um, I just got in, sir, and I'm not sure what it is, but if you continue, we'll get it another time.
Okay.
Very good. Well, motion to approve to continue to April 5th, I believe, provided that there is a building permit applied for.
Perfect.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Rita Das.
Yes.
Jim Sweeney.
Yes.
Samantha Boyce.
Move deny.
Tony Gonzalez. Yes. All right, will be continued.
Madam Chairman, lady.
Moving on to the next agenda item, we have 15 Rutland Square Residential Conversion Site Plan Approval. Okay.
Good evening again, Madam Chairlady, and through you to the board attorney Jake Creeden, 71 Legion Parkway, Brockton. This is Scott Farias really show on this situation, but just some background for the new members. We had approved by the zoning board some time ago for a residential unit in what is an industrial form of building. And we had many engineers and architects, and it's an R2 zone. And so, and we did, thanks to the consultations that I've had with the city planner and others, we own both lots that have the main building for the new residential unit situation and the additional parking that was necessary. We own both parcels. They're both in the Rutland Trust, and Mr. Ed Franco, who is our client, is the trustee of both of those pieces of property, so there's no legal issues with that. I think part of, I think your city planner will tell you, part of the, kind of the Campello revitalization plan that would have some of these old, tired warehousing type situations that aren't very attractive, and again, it was approved a few months ago, and we seem to think that it's in the best interest of the city to have that, and Scott will take over, I think, from here, unless there were questions of me.
There you go. Thanks. Yep. All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. Let's just kind of expand on what Attorney Creeden said. The project is, is kind of in the square of Rutland Square, Berkeley Street, and Market Street. It's an existing warehouse building that's been in different states of vacancy over the last number of years. What we have proposed is a 56-unit residential building, kind of a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units, the majority of which are going to be one-bedrooms. There's 31 one-bedroom units. We have 57 parking spaces shown on the property. One delivery space, that'll be a dedicated delivery space. The, the existing building that kind of faces Rutland Square on both sides is going to remain intact. It's going to be remodeled, obviously, but that, that existing portion of the building is staying. The wing of the building that kind of juts out towards Berkeley Street and goes right out onto Berkeley Street. That section of the building is going to be raised, and the parking area will be between the building and Berkeley Street with an entrance off of Rutland Square, and the second entrance is kind of a drive-through will be over on Market Street.
I'm sorry, Scott. I'm, I'm sorry, but Rob, are there plans that you want to pull up for this?
That'd be helpful.
Scott, do you have your plans available?
Loaded question again.
Why are you laughing, Madam Chair?
I'll drive. Okay.
I can try, Rob, if you want to keep testing me. It's up to you.
Here we go.
There you go. Thank you. I think probably sheet C4 would be the best one, Rob. There we go. So, Madam Chair, that, that shows the, the building, the existing building around both sides of Rutland Square. That's to remain. The parking area coming in off of Rutland Square and shooting all the way throughout to Market Street over the piece of property that Attorney Creeden spoke of. Right, as I said, that, the majority of the building is to remain, be remodeled. The 57 parking spaces, we're installing drainage to handle both the roof runoff and the runoff from the parking area where currently there really is no drainage on the site, so it's a vast improvement. There, we also have some landscaping proposed, whereas right now, there really is no landscaping at all. So we're taking care of that. All of the other utilities are available on, on Rutland Square that we're tying into, adequate water and sewer. We've gone through the, the tech review process back in November, I believe. Actually, it might have been before that. We had some comments from department heads, from the planning department. We feel like we've addressed all of those, Madam Chair, and yeah, we, we think we're in pretty good shape for everything, Madam Chair.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if you wouldn't mind, do we have the outside? That's the nice plane. Do we have the rendering again, just for the, like, the street-side view of it?
I don't have that. I didn't download that. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Let me, let me see what I can find. Hang on just a second.
Okay.
You guys talk, talk amongst yourselves.
Any other questions from board members, comments? So as far as I see, engineering's done pretty much everything. Just need sign it to market street. We need a, the plan recorded for Market Street. Is that still pending?
Recorded?
Yeah, it's been recorded.
Okay, it has been recorded, Madam Chair. So it was a plan that we No, I have the plan. Okay, all right, Pam has it.
Yes.
Okay, but it hasn't been recorded at the registry.
Oh, no, no.
All right, yes. So it needs to be picked up from Pam and dropped off at the registry, Madam Chair. So what that plan did was combine the lot on Market Street with the larger Rutland Square property. So now we've combined it into one lot.
So that's just the only outstanding piece, then. If this was to go through, we would need that recorded before we would sign the site plan.
And my apologies, I do not have the
Did you have a specific question, Jim, that maybe Scott could answer?
Yeah.
Elevation, thank you.
Yeah, I think they know my question. I, I do want to see the lighting scheme on the building.
Just here. Yeah, if you, if you can flip it over to me, Rob, I can.
It is yours.
You see anything?
We see your files.
This is the same problem we had last time.
You can't, you can't open your PDF.
Looking at it, Madam Chair, on my second screen, so I'm not sure why.
Oh, okay.
Okay. If your PDF is open, Scott, if you go back down to your share screen, unshare this screen, and then click that button, the green button again at the bottom, and it'll give, it should give you several squares for you to choose. And then choose the one that's your PDF. Okay. Well, we tried.
Still, still nothing?
No, can you email that to me?
It would be easier, Rob, yes.
Practice makes perfect, Scott. Took me a while to get this going since the pandemic myself.
The, the problem is, Madam Chair, every time I have a meeting with you folks, you just automatically make Rob do it, so you haven't allowed me to practice.
Oh, it's my fault.
And my fault, when last time you asked if he could do it, okay, next time, there'll be no favors, Rob. Scott's in the driver's seat.
I think you've enabled me, is what it comes down to, Madam Chair.
No.
All right, I just sent it to you, Rob.
Okay.
Hopefully, we get back to in-person next month, Madam Chair, and I'll just bring a big stack of plans with me.
Hallelujah. Other questions from the planning board? Do you want to get ready so we can keep this moving?
All right, here we go.
Okay, just left with Jim's questions, then. Beautiful.
Hmm, yeah, it did look good. Yeah, so exterior lighting on the building, kind of like I always ask about buildings like this, is there any downward-facing architectural lighting on the building?
It, it will all be downward-facing lighting, Mr. Sweeney, but to be honest with you, I don't believe the, we have them shown on the plan. So we can, we can certainly add it to our plan and have the architect add it to his final plans as well.
Yeah.
Similar to what we did at 1208 Montello. I, I think a similar situation on 1208 Montello, we decided to put them in between the windows. Obviously, there weren't as many windows as on this plan, and we decided right at the second floor would be the, the, you know, even with the second floor windows, would be the, the elevation to put them at, have the down-facing lights.
Mm-hmm.
So we can certainly add that to the plans.
Yeah, I think you've come up with a great plan here. You know, at night, I think, you know, the neighborhood would benefit from a dull glow off the building.
For sure. I agree.
I think we all, in the past, have agreed with Jim on this, so Scott, let's just have it on all your plans in the future.
Especially the plant area.
What is that you're pointing to, Rob?
This is the elevator core, the back of the elevator core, which forms a very dominant piece that says 15 Rutland.
And what is it you're suggesting?
That would be really great to have a light wash.
A light wash.
Agree, Rob.
L-I-G-H-T, not L-I-T-E.
On that. On that's the elevator.
How high are these parapets are? Do you know? I mean, I'm, this, I'm just curious. I mean, I was just.
That's your question? How high is what?
Those parapets, like, those, yeah, these portions from the roof, it's liquid.
And those are all new features.
Okay.
And I don't see a a measurement indication, but I would venture to say that they're between 30 and 35 feet.
Say 35 feet, and probably a little bit more with that elevator shaft.
Okay, other questions from the board?
Yeah, I guess my other question would be outside of that. What, what else do we have as far as any architectural in the landscape or anything like that, or in the entryways coming in and out?
We do have a landscape plan, Mr. Sweeney, sheet number C7. We're adding trees across the front on both sides of Rutland Square. Some heavy trees and shrubs along Berkeley Street, where we have a, a detention pond as well proposed, as well as plantings in the individual landscaped islands.
Okay. Is there going to be any, is there going to be any like a pillar address or, or something that states the address in that landscape?
Nope, I, I, I think we're figuring that elevator shaft would be
Okay, on the building?
Yeah, at this point, that's all we have proposed.
Okay.
Okay. Hey, other questions from the board?
The, the main entry would, will be from that, the other street, not the Market Street.
From Rutland Square, right.
Rutland Square.
Yeah, Market Street, of course. It's a one-way street in that area, so I, you know, I don't know how much traffic would, would come through from Market Square, from Market Street, but I think the majority.
That's a one-way street, right? It's going the other way, right?
It is a one-way heading towards Main Street. Yep.
But this is the main entrance here.
So where is your service parking? I see you have the dumpster on that property.
Yep.
Right, so I don't see any service parking there. There will be service truck coming in, right, and
They, they would have to drive in off of Rutland and back into the, the dumpster area and then continue out to Market Street.
Yeah, but there's no van parking or something like that.
We do have, there is one, yeah, there is.
The staging, how, you know?
Yep, there is one delivery space. I think flip back to C4, I guess, Rob, a C5. There is one delivery space directly across from the handicap spaces. Yeah, right where the, right where the transformer is, is a, yeah, right there is the delivery space.
That's for the postal deliveries, right? It's not for the trash.
Not, no, not exactly, not for the trash, just for deliveries Amazon.
Oops. Sorry, I have a new laptop, so I'm getting used to it.
Did he answer your question, Rita?
So I was wondering, where is the survey, like, trash staging area, you know? The trash trucks will be coming in, so they have to, you know, park their trash truck somewhere so that, you know, it's convenient and that those trucks won't interfere the other circulation of the building, so I don't see that here.
Well, I, I guess the area that, that Rob is pointing to right there, we, we've got the two dumpsters, and the actual pad in front of it is still another 10 feet wide, so there's, there's room for the trucks to back into those two dumpsters or drive-in, depending on the the pickup apparatus, and still have enough room for the traffic to flow behind the trucks. And, and, I mean, realistically, the trucks aren't going to be there for any extended period of time.
Yeah, but there are 57, 56 units, right? So they will be there like quickly twice or something like that, right? I mean, the senior dumpster, it's not big.
Yep.
They can do it multiple times a week. I live in a similar development.
Yeah, it's going to have to be more than once, that's for sure.
Mm-hmm.
Basically, Scott, they pull in, they pick it up and keep moving. They're not parked.
Exactly.
I think that was Rita's concern, they were going to park somewhere, but they're not going to park, they're going to pull in.
Dump it, pick up, pick it up, empty it, and keep moving, for sure.
Okay. All right, other questions? Anyone in the public raising their hand, Rob?
Hang on just a second, I need to stop share to see that. And attendees, if you have any questions or would like to testify, please, again, use the raise your hand function and, or press star nine if you're on the telephone. And Madam Chair, I do not see anyone raising their hand at this time.
Madam Chair, just really quickly, it's Scott, hi, good evening, has this plan already been recorded or no?
No, Pam has it and needs to be recorded before, if this gets passed, before we sign anything, it'd have to be a condition for it to be recorded, but Pam has it. Okay. Yeah, good question.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that the planning department has been working diligently with Scott and the architects and the property owners. It's taken a long time to get to this stage, and I think we're really happy with the product, it's going to really help the neighborhood a lot. And really take care of a longtime eyesore, and I'm sure Deputy Chief Williams would love to see a, the rehab and not be a hazard in the community.
I would second that. I, I said, Mr. Franco, see, Rob, we're there, this week alone, we've been there three or four times for a lot of problems, sprinkler issues, so the faster this gets done, the better off the city is. Back during the riots, some hoodlums actually set it on fire. And with Mr. Franco maintaining the sprinkler system for me, it put it out, and we saved the building, but that could have been one big disaster.
Thank you for that. So, board members, if we are going, we need a motion, and if you will need to add the lighting to the plan, the light wash on the elevator wall, and the recording of this plan for Market Street. Okay? Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Yeah, I lost my train of thought, 15 Rutland Square and 48 Market Street. It is subject to the proof of recording of the plan and the light washing on the building, and there was one, or the downward lighting being shown on the plan. This is not a continuance, is it, or is it? Nope.
No.
Nope, this is the end.
I'll second that, I'll second that motion.
Roll call Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Preetadas?
Yes.
James Meaney?
Yes.
Samantha Voice?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes, all right.
You folks.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Sumner Street. That one's good, but okay, site plan approval for 648 Sumner Street.
Summer Street.
Summer Street, thank you. I need my big computer. All right. So applicant here?
Peter is, I see Peter.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to work. Multiple buttons.
Yeah. Are you moving him?
I moved him. I think I did.
Hi.
Thank you.
Hi, okay.
We're all here.
I'm gonna disappear and, and leave it to the experts. Sorry.
Madam Chairwoman, if you're ready, my name is Jim Burke, an attorney at law with offices at 48 North Pearl Street in Rockton. Pleasure to represent people, Akun, Brophy, and Phillips. This is a project that has been, I guess, vetted in a number of ways. It went before the zoning board of appeals and secured approval. It's for a green solar project, it's obviously a very detailed plan, and I'm pleased that in the final analysis, we received some neighborhood support as well as the endorsement of Counselor Nacastro. So, we're, we're ready now to provide a, a completion with a site grant approval. Steve Giosa is here, and Steve's the one you really want to hear from, so I'm gonna let him pick it up and go ahead and identify the project and why it's so good.
Very, very good, if I may, for the record, Steve Giosa with Site Tech Engineering, Civil and Environmental Consultants located in Rainham, Massachusetts, and if I may be allowed to share.
Oh, perfect, thank you, so I was gonna ask.
Yeah, if I can share my screen, I will put a couple of exhibits for the audience to view. And I'm starting with an overview of the site, which will show the subject property outlined in yellow. This is a five-and-a-half acre parcel of land located on the east side of Summer Street, north is generally to the top of the plan. You'll see we have the large rehabilitation facility to the north, some residential properties on the west, and then undeveloped land both to the south and to the east. As Attorney Burke indicated, we had started this project a number of years ago. Our initial process was to determine what would impact the development of this land, so we completed property surveys, topographic surveys, had our wetland specialist come out and do well in delineations for the subject property and the surrounding area. That survey determined that there were wetlands on the adjacent properties, both to the east and to the south. But the overall site consisted of the former industrial building here in the lower southwest corner of the site. I'm sure the board members remember this building, fairly large structure, fell into significant disrepair, the applicant has subsequently demolished the structure. Second building on the property located, again, on the west side, adjacent to Summer Street, that has also been demolished, and there was a paved parking facility that served this industrial complex for many years down in the, again, the, basically the southwest quadrant of the subject property. So, that initial evaluation brought us to some of the key reviews with the community, and starting with the wetlands, you'll see on this particular exhibit, this line represents the wetland boundary that was reviewed by conservation and subsequently approved on the, on the east side, then on the south side, again, there is a wetland boundary here, and then the various buffer zones associated with it, terminating with the 100-foot buffer zone, which you can see extends slightly onto the property on the south and the east side. So, majority of the site outside of the buffer zone and all of the site outside of the wetland resource area. This jurisdiction did prompt us to have to file a notice of intent with conservation, so as part of the initial review of this site, knowing that conservation was going to be a, a critical element, we did file a notice of intent. The notice of intent included a stormwater management system, which I'll get into in a minute, as well as requests for approval of the well and delineation. The well in line was subsequently approved for the site after a walkthrough and review with both our wetland specialist and the city's wetlands administrator, and then the stormwater management system was reviewed, both by the commission and by an outside peer reviewer, beta consultants was retained at the applicant's expense to do a peer review of the stormwater management, and that was eventually approved, so it brings us to this particular proposal for the site, which is a solar project in which all of the existing industrial structures and pavement will be removed, restoring the area to a grass surface. We have a pollinator mix going in the solar project and then just standard seeding on the outer perimeters. But essentially, the project would be conversion from a repurposing of this industrial site to a green energy project with access onto Summer Street, there would be an access point here, opposite Coral Street, which would come in, provide an access drive for the long-term maintenance of the equipment on the site, the equipment would be located down in a little bit lower grade, this is about a five-foot drop below the grade of Summer Street, so the topography of the land drains down into the site, and we've maintained that existing drop in topography to not only accommodate the equipment, but also to create a visual buffer from the adjacent public way. So, we have our equipment pads, which would include the inverters and transformers and switching equipment located in the lower section here, adjacent to our access drive, and then the panels arrayed with a southern exposure, so facing a south or facing the undeveloped woodlands to the south and to the east of the site. The array in the center of the project. And then the entire perimeter would have a chain link fence for security and public safety, completely surrounding the facility, leaving at the outer perimeter and outer edge, which would be kept undeveloped so that we would have full access around the entire array perimeter, where we would not have the solar panels encroaching within a 30-foot setback area on the outer edge of the site. We've also pulled the fencing in adjacent to the adjacent residential properties here to the north, and also brought the fencing in away from the layout line of Summer Street. And we have had our landscape architect, Stephanie Fuss, propose a planting plan, so we have buffer plantings on the outside of the fence, so to create a visual screening on the outside, and then a staggered row of evergreens along the north and west edge here, again, providing buffer screening from these properties. The grade drops down from the adjacent commercial property to the north, and you have wetlands on the south and the east, so buffering is less of a concern for those particular areas. Now, I started out with, the project involves maintaining the general grading of the site, so topography, and this is the grading and drainage plan, but essentially, the site drains from a high area, high elevation on the east side down into a valley, this is where the parking lot and the lower loading areas to the industrial building were located. And there is a stormwater system that actually ran through and served the industrial complex when it was operational. Our plan is to eliminate all that impervious surface, have the solar modules arrayed through the site. The topography essentially following that same general pattern, so no major earthwork, just kind of a reshaping to get a more uniform slope, but essentially maintaining the same topography, very little, if any, earthwork involved here because the topography already works really well, and then we're dropping the grade here to create that terrace a little bit lower, below-street grade to create a visual buffer for the equipment and access drive in this location here. The storm drain system consists of a series of catch basins which exist in the property, but there, it's an older system, so the goal would be to clean the drain line, rehabilitate the structures. We're actually going to add water quality inserts to each of the catch basins to get improved stormwater, water quality draining through the site, so from an environmental standpoint, we'll actually have less runoff leaving the property, no change in drainage pattern, the water drains through here now, it'll continue to drain through here. There'll be an improved water quality, as I indicated, with the inserts, and then also, there's a drain line that originates on the adjacent property here, picks up their stormwater, bleeds into the site, and it's created some erosion up in this location here. So, when we work through the design with beta engineering, we agreed to put in a crushstone drainage swale to avoid an erosion, a long-term erosion problem, and we're directing their overflow water down to a controlled catch basin here, so we don't have, again, any long-term maintenance issues to deal with, with the facility. As a green energy project, it really is low intensity, very infrequent activity coming to the site, once it's operational, you might see a pickup truck coming here once a month, do just maintenance or checking some of the equipment, everything is remotely monitored, so there is always going to be someone monitoring the equipment, monitoring how it's producing, whether there's any faults, whether there are any panels that need to be switched out because they're no longer functioning, so again, very low impact on the neighborhood once the construction is completed. It's probably about a three-to-four-month construction process, but essentially, we bring the equipment in, it stays here, complete the work, and then it leaves, so there's really not a lot of back and forth on the public way. So, we think, again, from that standpoint, it's relatively low intensity, even during that construction process. And we're basically planting about 30, 60, 77 trees and shrubs, creating that buffer planting in the, the high-visibility portions of the site. So, that's an overview of the site, again, if I didn't mention it, we do have the order of conditions from conservation and be happy to answer any questions the board may have at this time.
Thank you for that very thorough overview, so that was my question, but you answered it, other questions from the planning board?
Madam Chair, if I could, just some revisions from the zoning board of appeals. We, were you doing sidewalk from property line to property line, in case the city wanted to continue that, okay?
Yeah, that was one of the things that did come out of the zoning hearing, that because of the pedestrian use in the bus stop in the area, that we would, we would make sure we've kept our plantings back and we would basically create that sidewalk along the, the entire frontage.
That, that'll be poured by you?
Yes.
Okay. Also, just because I know the area very well, security cameras are gonna be installed on the property?
All the equipment is monitored, we typically leave that decision whether they actually need cameras for monitoring to the solar operators, but everything is remotely monitored, so if there is an issue, it is immediately detected. We know this site has had some history of some problems with folks out on the property with some illicit activity, we think that with the security we have and the, and the activity that we are providing here, we're hopefully gonna eliminate a lot of that nuisance activity for the neighborhood.
Okay, did we stipulate that on the ZBAN?
If, if I may, Mr. Sweeney, I believe you're accurate, the developer agreed to put in the, uh, uh, security cameras as part of the construction.
Okay, thank you. And I guess my last question is just kind of more for, I guess, our general awareness. The lifetime of this project, I know you gave us some sort of timeline, whether it was 30 years or whatever it was, but what is the lifetime of this project?
Yeah, the, the modules today are much more efficient, so they're typically rated for a 30-year lifespan, so we're looking at this as having a minimum lifespan of 30 years. There is a decommissioning plan in a, in, in place, if the system is ever abandoned or no longer used, there would be a requirement to decommission the entire facility, but we've typically been seeing these projects get approved for a 30-to-35-year lifespan, and, and we'd anticipate that as technology changes, it probably would get a refresh at that time period and, and continue to serve as a green energy project.
Okay, so it's not like packing up and, and changing use, it'll be a continuous use, but that's just for whatever technology you have on there now?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board?
So, is there any?
So is there any nighttime lighting there?
No, there, there is no proposed lighting because again, we like to make sure we're not going to be intrusive into the neighborhood. And, and there's no need for that. When the trucks come, if they have to do a service at night, the trucks would be equipped with portable lighting to accommodate that service. But ordinarily, any work that they're doing is daylight hours. Very little need for us to be out here in the evening.
Other questions?
Just a quick second, Madam Chair. I had been called, I was called by Susan MacCaster just recently. Couple minutes before the meeting, she could not make it. But she wanted to make sure that, in our discussion, that the solar field was not visible from the street. And I was hoping that the applicant can go back and show us the landscape plan and talk about the height of the landscape as it is planted and what it will grow into. Because you're talking right now about a chain link fence. And you know, we want to make sure that, that we're not staring at something ugly.
Would that be the seventy-seven shrubs?
Yes. So what we're planning on in what Stephanie has proposed for this site are blue junipers, dwarf white pines and rhododendron mixed along the edge here and here. And essentially, this, this, three things that can create the buffering here. The first is the, the plantings along the edge and the, the dwarf pines, I believe the maximum height they grow to is about fifteen feet. And the reason we picked something like that is shading, as you might expect on a solar project, is something we want to get effective screening. So we've gone with plants that will hold the, the evergreen year round. But at the same time, not grow to fifty feet and create a, a loss of production of energy. But those are all along the frontage here. Then you have the fence behind that. And then again, the grade transition here dropping down. So we think that this buffer planting here with a staggered row of plantings where we create a little bit wider buffer strip will help with the residential properties here. And then we think we get an effective screening with the grade transition as well as the the, the buffer plantings along the edge here. The specs on the plantings, if I can change my scale, when they're planted. The plants are in the four to five foot height range immediately. For the white pines and then the rhododendrons, we actually have a higher, five to six feet at planting. So we think we have some pretty good sized plantings at day one coming in here. And then over time, it'll definitely be a completely effective screen.
How, how tall is a, is one of the solar panels?
The panels on the, the low edge, so the south edge of the panels is the low edge, that's typically about two and a half to three feet above the ground. And again, we want to take into account for normal snow accumulation. So you don't want the bottom buried in snow. And then the top edge is usually between eight and eight and a half feet above the ground level. Based on the angle of the, the modules.
Thank you.
If I could, Madam Chair, if I could just add, from the ZBA hearing and listening to the neighbors. Being able to see into this is big for them. So that if there was anything going on, a fire, a riot, anything that they can see inside too, however it is kind of covered. So maybe for the benefit of the rest of the board members to know that information as well.
Is it anyone in the public raising their hand, Rob?
So those of you in the public who would like to speak, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen. And, or press star nine if you're on cellphone. And Madam Chair, I do not see anyone raising their hand or requesting to speak.
If there are no other questions, is there a motion?
So I just have a, have one question regarding the stormwater. So is there any approval from the D engineer from the stormwater?
Yeah. So we had, we had the reviewers meeting. So as far as the city engineering is concerned, you had the peer review engineer, which was a professional engineers who specialize in drainage design, who did the initial review through the conservation process. Then we had the reviewers meeting and there was a request for us to add some additional spot elevations to the plan to document how the drainage would make sure it got to the places we wanted it to. And we did provide that on the plans that are before you. And we also submitted that to, to the city engineer.
And we have the approval from them, right?
Correct.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve with standard conditions.
Second.
Right. Roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Samantha Boyes?
Yes.
Rita Das?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Good night now.
Thank the board.
You're welcome. Okay. Moving on to that one's continued. Are we at thirty twelfth Ave, preliminary subdivision? Yes. Okay. J K Holmgren.
I'm elevating Scott.
I think you do it and I do it at the same time and we cancel each other out.
So meeting adjourned. Nope, there's Scott. Dang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Scott Farrier, Holmgren Engineering. For thirty twelfth Ave. What we have before you is a preliminary subdivision plan. We're looking to divide the existing lot that has about forty thousand square feet and boy, about, about two hundred and eighty feet of frontage. We're looking to divide it into two residential lots. It's in an R one C zone. Obviously, to do that, we need ZBA approval to create this new single family house lot. In order to get to ZBA, as you know, as part of the process, we need to come to you first for a preliminary subdivision approval. And then we grant that, we go to ZBA. If we get ZBA approval, we come back to you for a definitive subdivision. So again, we're looking to create a roughly sixteen thousand square foot single family house lot. All of the residential lots around us are either seventy-two hundred square feet or fourteen thousand square feet. So we're in excess of our direct abudders. As far as that goes, we would have a hundred and forty-five feet of frontage. Plenty of room on all sides for a, for the single family home. Twelfth Ave itself is in, is in relatively good shape. It's about a twenty-four or twenty-five foot wide public way, has utilities existing on it that are available for us to tie into. So we would ask that you grant us preliminary subdivision approval so we can proceed with the ZBA, Madam Chair.
Would like to open up for questions or comments.
Do you want to talk to the board first?
That's what I was asking.
Oh, okay.
Board members, any questions or comments?
Sure. Hi, Scott. I see that there's a garage on this plan. Can you talk a little bit about that? How big is that garage? And how does that impact what exactly you want to do here?
Well, the, the garage is obviously, as you can see, behind the existing home. It's gonna remain with that existing house number thirty. It's a, it is a, you know, a good sized garage, but it's a, it's basically a single car garage. So it, it's gonna remain with the, with the existing house.
Okay. Was it a garage or a gazebo?
No, it's, it's definitely a garage. Yeah.
Is there a gazebo too that's not on here?
Madam Chair. When you view this on Google Earth, there is a a room that it, it sticks out this. Wouldn't quite call it a gazebo or, but call it maybe a sunroom. So I don't know if you have a full sixteen feet of separation between the lot lines because there's a, a much larger bump out of this building. If I could stop sharing for just a second, I'm gonna pull that other map up because I took a second. So please.
Do you know what he's referencing, Scott, what he's about to pull up?
The same thing I think Rob is looking at and I'm looking right.
I drove by there today. There's definitely, it's like, it looks like, it looks like a gazebo, but it's a like a half gazebo attached to the south side of the property. So that is gonna cut down the sideline a bit.
Definitely. Their intention, Madam Chair, i- is to keep that gazebo in place. Would make us too close. So we, we would definitely look to move that lot line, Madam Chair.
And then are you aware the plan is missing information as far as the wetland and the buffer zone to the wetland?
Um, there is no wetland. There's a flood zone, which that, the line that we have shown on the plane is just the flood zone. It's just a graphical location of the flood zone, but there are no wetlands on the property.
Is that what you have, Rob?
I'm gonna let Pam answer that. This is the gazebo for the public.
Megan had looked at the site and the wetlands are, are on the abutting site. And MFGIS shows it's somewhat onto that property or just at the property line. And she said therefore the buffer zone is on that property.
The buffer zone.
Twelfth Ave, thirty twelfth Ave or the abutters?
On Lot A.
Yep. The buffer zone encroaches onto Lot A.
Okay. So we are indeed missing some information. Okay.
I think we certainly need to throw that gazebo, Madam Chair, and bump over that lot line.
So the gaze, the gazebo or the sunroom, whatever that is, and the, the buffer zone to the wetland that's on Lot A?
Yes. So having said that, Madam Chair, could I ask for a continuance?
Pam, that's a continuance would be fine?
Yes, if this is something that you would be entertaining. Yes. You need the, you need the rest of that information.
So how much time would you need? Sorry, Jim, one second.
Yep.
How much time would you need to get all this together and pull this plan to into compliance?
I, I think we could get it, you know, get it to you in time for the, for the next meeting, Madam Chair.
Okay. Jimmy, add some more questions?
Is there anybody from the public that we can hear speak on this prior to that continuance? Just to get a heads up maybe?
A lot of people.
Sure, sure. But any other comments or concerns from the the board before we consider a continuance?
Yes, Madam Chair. Are there existing utilities currently for the home that's on that property?
The sewer and water for the existing home.
Thank you, Scott.
Any other questions before we open up to the public? Okay.
Members of the public, please use the raise your hand icon. Which if you hover your mouse at the bottom of the screen, you'll see pop up. And those of you who are on phone, please press star nine. And Madam Chair, I don't see anybody raising their hand at this time.
Madam Chair, may I make a comment?
Sure.
Thank you. Scott, while you have your eraser out redoing the plans. The fourteen by fourteen deck on the new house, that would encroach in the rear property setback, correct?
Read.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, wasn't, no other questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve his continuance?
Um, filing deadline is Monday.
Believe you're right.
Madam Chair, I, I move deny the request. There a motion? Second. So we need someone to either support the, her denied or someone to make a motion to approve his continuance.
I, I feel a motion to approve to continue.
I'll second that.
All right. So he'll start again. All in favor, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Or Rita Das?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Okay, moving on to the last item on the agenda. We have twenty-one Flint Road preliminary subdivision.
Bear with me just a second because I've become unstable. Again. My internet, my internet is unstable.
I'd specify.
Thank you. Hopefully that'll take care of it. All right, go ahead, Scott.
Scott Farrier, Holmgren Engineering. Madam Chair, similar to the previous, what we have is a, a combination of two lots, a real big lot off of East Street that has about ninety thousand square feet at six fifty-five E Street and then a smaller lot on Flint Road. And what we're hoping to do is the Flint Road lot has about eighteen thousand square feet, the existing Flint Road lot at twenty-one Flint Road. So what we're looking to do is to combine those two parcels and divide those two parcels into three lots. Lot A would house the existing twenty-one Flint Road with ten thousand square feet. Lot B would be a brand new lot with thirty thousand square feet. Lot C would have the existing house at six fifty-five East Street with about seventy-six thousand square feet. All three of those lots would need ZBA approval, uh, approval, Madam Chair. Lot A would be deficient in both frontage and area, lot width. Lot B, the same, and Lot C would be short on frontage but have enough area. So it would basically be looking to create three, three lots that need relief from the ZBA. To the other situation, Flint Road, East Street, both existing roadways. Plenty of access with everything like that. So we're basically just looking for your preliminary approval to get to ZBA. Let them vote on the property. And then if we get a positive vote from the ZBA, we'd be back before you for a definitive plan to divide the A vote from the ZBA, we'd be back before you for a definitive plan to divide the property, I assume.
Unlike the previous property, um, again, not conforming, but you don't have utilities. Which should be on this preliminary plan.
Have them on Flint Road, Madam Chair, but not for the house on East Street.
And my understanding it should be included since. Flint, that, that property is included in this.
Sure.
Yeah, well, you don't have it on, um, the existing dwelling.
Right. Any other questions or comments from the board?
So Lot B, uh, is the existing building and the other structure?
Oh, Lot B would be a brand new lot that would, uh, be created and would, uh, be the site of a new four bedroom home.
So how much frontage Lot B will have? I don't see any number there.
Twenty feet.
Twenty, two zero?
Twenty. So it'd have a hundred twenty feet of frontage and thirty thousand square feet.
Madam Chair, can I make a comment? I just want to point out that. This is the current lot line. And so what they're doing is dividing this lot into two. So. They can take this section of, of the old lot and this section of a new lot. And combine them together. To create that. Do you see where I'm going?
One more time, Rob, please, sorry.
Okay, this is the current lot line.
Looks like a boot.
Yeah. Ski boot. And so what they're gonna do is divide the lot here. And then divide this lot off of another piece of property. And combine the small parcel with this parcel. And you get a much larger. Um, and I would venture to say conforming lot. Or close to conforming lot. However, this lot. It is. Weirdly shaped. Is ten thousand square feet.
Exactly. Yes, sir.
You know, this. How this was ever approved in the old days is, is beyond me. This was the, sort of the yard. For the family over here. Um, you can see you've got fourteen feet and five feet between the building and, uh. The lot line. Never should have been allowed. But now, instead of having this large side yard, you've lost all of that space. You have twenty-five foot setback, thirty fact from the street, but it's just. Ten and, uh, ten and a half and fourteen point eight. Which is really, really tight.
Okay, uh, thank you. Any other questions, comments from the board? If there are none, I want to open up to the public, Rob.
Uh, let me stop share so I can do that. Members of the public, if you would like to speak on this topic. Please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen. If you hover, um, your mouse is over the bottom, that will pop up. And then, uh, also, if you're on a cellphone, um, star nine, and that will do the same thing. We have four attendees in the room, um, at the moment. But I think they're just watching because I, I don't see anybody raising their hand at this time.
Going once, twice. Okay, board members, any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to deny.
Thank you. Okay, roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Samantha, you're yes to deny?
Yes, move deny.
Okay. Rita?
Yes.
Move to deny. Tony Gonzalez, move to deny. All right. Thank you, Scott. Is there any other business? No? All right.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, second.
Second.
All in favor, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Samantha Boyce?
Yes.
Rita Das?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Good night all. Thank you very much for your time.
Bye.
Good night, everyone.
Bye.